Good afternoon, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners' special call meeting, our work session for February 23rd, 2016. We have several tabs this morning, but we're going to begin with tab number one, Transportation Agency. Director Wilgus, who do you have as our guest today?
Good afternoon Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. This afternoon, we've got John Hancock with Georgia Department of Transportation and Bert Brantley with the State Road and Toll Authority, who's going to give you a presentation on the Managed Lane Project.
Perfect, thank you.
John?
Good afternoon, it's a great pleasure to be here today, and I'd like to give you an update on the Northwest Corridor Project. This project, as we know, stated before, and I'll give you a little summary, is part of the overall Georgia Express Lane Program. This is going to be Northwest Corridor Express Lanes up here in Cobb and Cherokee County, also will be I-75 South in Clayton and Henry County, the expansion up in Gwinnett on I-85. So it's an ever-growing system, it's proven reliability that we have so far as part of the I-85 hot lanes that are still functioning 16 miles in Gwinnett County. Give people a choice to get out of congestion when they need to and get where they need to go. An overview of the Northwest Corridor Project, it is 29.7 miles of newly constructed roadway that will be built adjacent to the existing I-75 and 575. It begins as a two-lane system at I-285 and travels along the west side of the interstate up to 575. At that point, it divides into two one-lane systems, continues up in the median of I-75 until Hickory Grove Road. On 575, it continues in the median to Sixes Road. Access along I-75 will be through new interchanges that will be separated from the general purpose lanes. These will be at Terron Mill Road, Big Shanty, Roswell Road, and Hickory Grove on the south side. Along I-575, access into the system in the morning will be through slip ramps at Sixes Road, Schalford Road, and Barrett Parkway. Access to the general purpose lanes in the evening on 575 will be at the same locations. One thing to note about the 575, these are not new interchanges, but you will use the existing general purpose lanes to access local roads. So you'll be able to enter in the morning and exit in the evening. This is a reversible system. It will travel southbound in the morning towards Atlanta, and in the evening, sometime midday, will reverse and travel northbound. Groundbreaking was on September of 2014, with construction beginning on October 6th of 2014. We are currently under construction and have been for about a year and a half. This project actually was given notice received in November of 2013. We are on schedule for completion in summer of 2018. And here, as you can see, there's a rendering of what the ramps right there at the 285/75 interchange will look like. So overall, the project will add 39 new bridges. There'll be about 5.3 miles worth of new bridges added as part of this project, 11.4 miles of new concrete paving, 11.1 miles of asphalt paving. Currently, we're about 40% done, according to time and money on the project, so we're doing quite well. I think coming up this June will be our 50% halfway mark in the project. So 45 sound barriers being added, 68 retaining walls, and a lot of these will be completed this year. We do have several major construction areas, but for the most part, we are working from anywhere all the way from 285 up to Hickory Grove on 75 and 575. We are progressing up, and we have completed about seven miles worth of asphalt paving, drainage structure as part of this roadway. About 10 miles total will be constructed on 575. A little bit of overview, this is showing the 575/75 interchange. This picture actually shows where we have shifted the 575 ramp to 75 South into a temporary location in order to build the new bridges that will allow the managed lanes to go underneath it. Traveling up on Big Shanty Road, you can see it's exit the bridges there, it was being constructed over Big Shanty. This will be one of the new interchanges for 75. Construction of, over Delk Road, and actually, just to show you how fast we're moving, we actually have beams set on all these columns that are actually set here now, so even as we speak, the pictures are becoming outdated. This is Canton Road Connector, Bridge Over Canton Road Connector, Canton Road. This one would be the largest bridge on the project, which is 5,971 feet. It's actually be the third-largest bridge in the state of Georgia. It is the largest bridge over land for the state of Georgia. This shows you the, kind of, an aerial view, kind of seeing the whole bridge as it starts there, just north of Allgood Road. The interchange at 285 and I-75 is coming together. These are the bridges that will allow access to and from I-285 and 75. And one of the things that we have tried to do as part of the project is that we want the entrance ramps. This one is showing a rendering of what it would look like here at Roswell Road, but we wanted to keep the ramps looking like a normal interchange. So we've got a system of gates that are there, so in the morning, or excuse me, this will be the evening because this is facing northbound, we'll have the ramps, the gates open so that people can enter the system and go northbound. The gate's on the southbound side, where they would use in the morning, or which would be closed. And these will be a series of gates, there'll be a couple warning gates out there, then a resistance gate, which will resist traffic from going the wrong direction. We have done coordination with first responders, and so one of the things that we do in allowing access in case of emergencies, is that where possible, these gates that will open up in the median to allow access to and from the managed lanes to the general purpose lane. So if we need to get emergency vehicles in, we can get them in, or we need to get cars out of the managed lanes, we can use this access to access back into the general purpose lanes.
I'm Bert Brantley with the State Road and Tollway Authority, and just as John passed the presentation to me, GDOT will build the project, and then they will pass operation of the project over to the State Road and Tollway Authority. And we are a state agency, sister agency to GDOT. We partner with them on a number of financing projects around the state, and this is, of course, the largest project the state has undertaken. And so we will come in, when the project's complete, we'll put in all the toll equipment, and then we will collect the tolls. It's important to note that there'll be no toll booths on this project. Toll booths are the old way to collect tolls. We are all electronic here in Georgia now, and that means the Peach Pass, which you see there on your screen, that is a small electronic sticker with an RFID antenna that you stick under your rearview mirror. You drive under the gantries that have the toll readers, they read where you go in, and then where you come out, and they calculate the toll based on your time of day usage and how long you use the project. There'll be signs out throughout the corridor, it's not a guessing game, you will know exactly what the price is to the destination that you want to go to, and so it is very, the signs are giving enough room to where you have a choice to get in the managed lane or to stay in the general purpose lane. So you have that choice every morning, every afternoon, to whether it's worth it to you, whether there's value in getting home early to your kid's soccer game, or to a flight at the airport, or wherever you're trying to get to, you can make that value judgment each day. And that's what people do on 85 in Gwinnett County now, about 25,000 cars a day use the express lanes there. Important to note, as John mentioned, this is reversible, so we'll get two lanes of usage in the morning, and also two lanes of usage in the afternoon. So we expect those numbers to be significantly higher on the Northwest Corridor Project, a lot more usage up here, which means benefit not only to those using the lanes, but also to those in the general purpose lanes, because those cars are now removed from the regular lanes as well. So there'll be time savings in both the regular lanes and in the managed lanes as well. So the Peach Pass right now, I-85 and Gwinnett is our only toll facility, but we are, the South Metro Project in Henry County will open in January of 2017, the Northwest Corridor Project, as John mentioned, in early 2018, and then extension of I-85 up into, further into Gwinnett County later in 2018. So this is part of a network, a system that GDOT is building. The Governor and Commissioner of GDOT just announced even more express lanes around 285, the top end, up 400. The concept really is to connect all of these projects together, where you can have a seamless trip, and also transit will be able to use these lanes and have a reliable trip for transit as well. So this makes transit a much more efficient and reliable option for people who would like to take commuter buses and those express coaches, CCT and Express, that run from Cobb County now. So you'll get much more reliable service on those. The most reliable Greta routes are on 85 right now. Those have their most reliable trip times each day because they use the 85 express lanes. So it makes that a much more convenient option for people. So dynamic pricing is the way that we ensure that reliable trip, and so each morning, the cost will start out at 50 cents, that is the minimum toll that'll be charged, even if you're going the entire length of the project. As traffic builds, the price will go up depending on the volume of cars and the speed of cars using the managed lanes. And so it is a predictive algorithm that constantly calculates how many cars are in, what speed are they going, and the cost continues to go up until we hit that equilibrium price that hits the right price to let enough people in, to get as many people moving through the corridor as possible, but not too many that congest the corridor, because we don't want people pay and then sit in the same traffic that they sit in the general purpose lanes. So this system is in operation on 85 every day. The highest that it's reached for the full 16-mile trip is $12. Every quarter is different, we have two lanes here for use instead of just one lane, and so those prices will likely start out much lower, but it really will depend on what people want to pay and what their, the value they see in the lane. So that range is not set by any human, that range is set by the computer algorithm that's constantly calculating that price each day. And it'll go up in the morning, through the peak, and then come down. As John mentioned, we'll switch the lanes to run northbound in the afternoon, and then the same thing, start at 50 cents in the early afternoon, and it will build throughout the rush hour. And just to give you an idea, when we first opened the I-85 lanes, the price was set around $5, which was too much. Nobody used them, you may remember the news coverage, they were completely empty. The Governor came in and lowered the rates, and since then, traffic has continued to build, to the point now where we are setting new highs every month, even at the price being $12. So there's a demand there for a reliable trip, for people to be able to get where they're going, to a meeting, to work, wherever they're headed. So that dynamic pricing system we'll use here, but it'll work much better because we have two lanes, and it's a barrier-separated facility instead of one that you can get in and out of throughout the corridor. So we're excited to have the, we've learned lessons from I-85, we brought those lessons to this project and I-75 on the south side as well. So how to get a Peach Pass, I just, we got at least one customer, I talked to Jim earlier. There's a lot of ways to get it, online, calling in, we have walk-up centers. We're also partnering with the Department of Driver Services, and we'll have a walk-up center up here in those offices as well, so when people are there to get their license renewed, they can, we'll have staff there, and we'll actually have a location there where they can do that as well. So we try to make it as convenient as possible. You just stick a credit card or debit card on your account, as you use the toll, it automatically reloads, so it's very convenient, there's no fishing for change in your change jar. We try to make it as convenient as possible, so that sort of takes that hassle out of using a toll facility. We also have what we call a Pay and Go Peach Pass. This is to get at those customers who either don't have credit or debit cards, they prefer cash, maybe they don't want the State Road and Tollway Authority to have their name and their email address. So this is available at CVS and Walgreens, right there on the gift card aisle. You can pick up either a starter kit, which has a Peach Pass in it, and load your account there at the register, or you can pick up a reload card. If you already have an account, you can get this reloaded card, and you can go back to CVS and Walgreens and load your account each time that you want to put more money on it. This is an anonymous account, and so we offer an incentive for people to get this and then convert to a toll account, and we give $5 in toll credits. But if people prefer to remain anonymous, they can do that and just use it like this. Question we always get is what happens if I don't have a Peach Pass? And what happens there is we take a picture of your license plate, we recognize you don't have a Peach Pass, picture your license plate, and then we send you a nasty gram in the mail asking for you to pay your toll plus a small fee to cover our costs from having to recoup that. We do offer, if you convert to a Peach Pass customer, we offer a waiver, a one-time waiver of those fees. Again, we're a state agency, we're not in this to make money, we're in it to have an efficient, effective facility that is reliable, and so we want people to sign up for the Peach Pass so they can use it when they need it. Last thing I'll cover today is regional interoperability. We have worked with Florida and North Carolina to allow the Peach Pass to work in those states. The Sun Pass and Quick Pass also works here in Georgia now, and so, as we know, people, they don't just stay in one state, they drive all over, particularly Florida, which has 700 miles of toll roads down there, and so when people get their Peach Pass, they're able to now use those in our neighboring states. We are working with South Carolina and Alabama, they have just a couple of bridges in those states, working with them now. And then next, we will go westward, like Lewis and Clark, and we'll head to Texas and work on the Texas hub, and try to get them hooked up, and then Easy Pass up in the northeast will be next. And that's based on the number of vehicles we see in our lanes. So we have triaged those, North Carolina and Florida were the ones we saw the most, and we're working sort of down the list, so we get the most people who are interested in driving in those lanes, that we get them connected first. And so it's a great, our customers love it, a great convenience for them, particularly if you ever head to Florida, there's a lot of toll booths down there, and so you can just go right through the Sun Pass lanes, you don't have to stop at the toll booth, and you actually get a discount. They offer like a 5% electronic discount down there, so it saves you money as well. For a $3 toll, you pay 285 instead. So it's working great, and we're really appreciative of them for connecting with us, and it helps their customers too. And their customers can contribute to our transportation infrastructure, so it's a benefit both ways. So John and I are here, certainly able to answer questions, I know you guys have a busy agenda. We're always available though, contact us, we have a project hotline, or GDOT does, and an email address. If your constituents have questions, please send them our way. We're also glad to come to, you know, Town Hall meetings, the neighborhood meetings, those kind of things. We're still a couple years away from opening, thank you Commissioner Burrell, who's invited us, but, you know, it's important that people know. I mean, even those who aren't happy about it, they should still know what's going on, and we want them to understand when it's going to open, how they can use it. Even the most strident opposition that we saw on 85, people still tell us today, "I don't like it, but I've got it, in case I need it, I need to get where I'm going, and I can't be late for a flight or for a meeting," or whatever it is. I don't love it, but I'm glad it's there because it's helpful. And transit customers just can't talk enough about it because it's made their trips much more convenient and reliable. So thank you again for the invitation to be here.
Appreciate it very much. I just want you all both to know, and take it to the Commissioner and the Governor as well, that we appreciate the commitment to Cobb County Northwest Corridor as we address alternatives to 75, and, you know, it played such an important part to getting folks in Chattanooga north and through the community. And this will, a little bit different in 85, and it adds capacity.
Thank you for, I should mention that, I didn't, thank you. But yeah, it is new, these are new lanes, that was certainly the big complaint on 85 was that we converted an existing HOV lane, and Governor Deal said that he's not in the conversion business any longer, and that really should be on first slide, John, we should work on that. But it's very important, it's new, it's not taking anything away from our current commuters, it's adding a new option, and it really is going to help, even those who aren't in the managed lanes as well.
Yeah, and specifically here in Cobb, a lot of our commuters go from Cobb to downtown, so this would be an attractive alternative, as you said, for those that want to use or utilize express bus, but haven't the date, because they get into the same managed lanes that are into the same general purpose lanes somebody else does, not to mention the commuters coming out of Cherokee County, who now have the opportunity to get on an express bus, get onto this system, and pass right through Cobb without ever touching the general purpose lane. So I think it'll help tremendously up and down the corridor, we appreciate the commitment the state has made to us. Bert, one question that keeps, not keeps coming up, it comes up periodically, to residents that who get it, that realize this is an alternative, not only from a transportation perspective, but there's, the comment been made, "When I leave my driveway, I have to make the decision whether I'm heading for a managed lane or I'm heading for a general purpose," because the intersections are different, and different paths of getting there. How does one, what do we, what is Greta doing to get ready for that communication?
So, you know, we don't want everyone to encourage folks to look on their phone when they're driving. We have seen over and over that it's dangerous, and so there is on our website a real-time toll information, they can look at the toll, they can look at the traffic, they can make that determination for themselves as they're leaving. Again, we would prefer them not do that while they're driving, maybe while they're sitting in their driveway, they can do that, or before they get out of the house. But yeah, it's very transparent, we're very public-facing in terms of getting those toll rates out. Now, they do change, and they change every five minutes, so you may see a toll rate, depending on how far you live away from the interchange, it may change by the time you get there, particularly if you're in the peak of the peak rush hour. I would say to you, on 85, what people tell us is commuting is very habitual, and they do sort of the same thing every day, and they start to sense a pattern. I had somebody tell me the other day that at 6:20, he knows what the price is going to be, because it's almost the same, unless there's an incident, he knows it's the same almost every day. So people are really smart about their commute, they know which way to go, it's like water flowing to the easiest, you know, way, and so we have those resources available, and we'll continue to have those, and have even more as we go forward. But I would say to you that people, they'll figure it out, I mean, they're really, really smart about this kind of stuff, but we do have those, the toll rates, the traffic, all that's available before you leave, not while you're driving, but it's there, and we're very hopeful people will use that and make that decision as they go.
Yeah, the thought was that when you get to your subdivision, you've got to make either a right to go to the general purpose, or make a left to go to the express, if you want to know which way to head.
Yeah.
So appreciate it.
And we'll continue to look for ways, certainly, obviously Cobb's been a great partner in this. As you hear ideas, as we hear ideas, we'll continue to work on how we can do as much as we can to let people know, because an informed decision is the best decision, right? And that's what we really want people to be able to make, and so as we come up with even new ways, who knows what we'll be doing by 2018, hovercars and, you know, all that kind of stuff. But yeah, hopefully, we'll be able to...
Hey, it's going to make a nice headline tomorrow.
But yeah, we're looking for more ways to do that as we go.
Terrific, thank you. Any other comments?
Could you comment on, say, car pools or motorcycles? I understand that'd be different than it is on 85, and they want me to discount or anything for that, is that correct?
Yeah, thank you for the question, question. So the converted HOV lane on I-85, because it was a federal grant project, a demonstration project, we had to carry those rules forward through the hot lanes. So on 85, if you're a 3-plus carpooler, a motorcycle, electric vehicle, then those get to ride for free. Well, what that does is it drives the price up for everybody else, because that equilibrium price that I mentioned earlier, when you're giving away 14% of the trips, so one out of every seven trips on 85 are free, and so that drives the price up to get to where you meet that equilibrium at, and we see that. So by not allowing free trips for those vehicles on these projects, we will keep the price down for everybody. And we weren't, that was a decision that was made because it wasn't, we weren't forced to do that, given that we weren't converting an HOV lane. There are bond covenants, we borrowed money, obviously, to build these projects, and so we had to tell them we're going to do everything we can to cover our costs and to pay back that debt. And so there was a number of factors went into the decision, but it's a great point, these projects, well, everybody pays except for transit, transit are the only vehicles, and also law enforcement that are on calls. And we do individual MOUs with law enforcement agencies that cover their use. But yeah, other than that, everybody pays, which, you know, brings the cost down for everybody.
Thanks. Any other questions? Commissioner Burrell?
Yes. Thank you both for your assistance in the past. This is, a lot of this is going through District 3, and I try to keep the residents informed, constituents informed on my weekly newsletter with your updates and everything as well, and I appreciate you coming out to my Town Hall last year to field some questions there. One thing that, the main thing that I like about this project is it's a pay-as-you-go. If you don't want to use it, you don't have to, and if you want to pay the price, you do, and to get where you're going. So I think that's a major plus. And also, will the buses be able to travel at no charge, like our CTT?
That's great, yes. Yeah, you pay a fare, obviously, to ride the bus, but the bus agency, there's no charge for the buses. They're the only, the only ones that will, in law enforcement, the only two that will not get a regular charge. They do have to have a Peach Pass, we have to monitor, so our system doesn't trigger, you know, violations running out. But yeah, we work very closely with GCT now, and we'll do that with CCT, so there'll be very seamless use of the lane. That really is one of the major benefits, I mean, I can't overstate that enough, Chairman Lee mentioned it, to get those buses out of the general purpose lanes and moving rapidly and not stuck in the same traffic, so, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your presentation, it was quite informative. I'm curious to know if there has been any thought of how we can change throughput on HOV lanes, particularly after you have all of this rapidity, you know, north of downtown, once you hit downtown, I mean, traffic is just slammed. Is there any way to look at how we can modify the HOV lane so that we can get some movement during the peak travel times?
Yeah, so the answer is, there are options, but they're not great. I mean, you can go to HOV 3+, which a lot of regions have done, where you have to have three people in the car to be able to use HOV lanes, but that's, it's difficult for people to find even one person in a carpool, much less two people. There are also delineators, those plastic poles that you've seen that can be put up, and that helps stop the merging back and forth out. So there are things, but none of them are great. I mean, they're really, I mean, they're, you know, it's one of those things where it's like a balloon, if you squeeze one side, the other side pops out. If you try to solve an issue, on the one hand, there's going to be other issues that come up. The good news is, most of our HOV lanes actually function above the federal standard, which is 45 miles an hour 90% of the time. 85 in Gwinnett did not, and so that was one of the reasons why we were able to do this pilot project, to convert it over to a hot lane. So the other option also would be hot, to introduce tolling into the mix as well. But again, as Governor Deal has, at least in his term, has said he would not do any more conversions of HOV lanes. So you're exactly right, it is certainly an issue, but all the answers cause other, you know, problems, that we hadn't landed on a great answer yet. I mean, of course, you could build a new road, double-deck it, and there's other, those kind of things as well, but every answer so far seems to cause other issues that leadership has not been willing to go down that road, at least of yet. But, you know, GDOT is, they're innovative, they're continuing to look in for answers. We've made modifications on 85, even though we've just been in operation four years up there, and so if there's an answer out there that works, you know, we're going to find it and we'll put it in. But it's, I mean, people, people are driving, you don't want to discourage carpool, and obviously, that's great for air quality and for traffic, but when too many people carpool, you get some of those slowdowns that you mentioned, but if you've got ideas, we'd love to have them. So, but there are ideas out there, just, it seemed, there are other problems that crop up when you try them, is that, okay. That really's not my area, I just answered on behalf of GDOT, but I used to do that for a living, so it's fine.
Sorry, you promised so hovercraft or something like that?
We'll take that, too. One last question, if there's been some consideration for east and west metro Atlanta?
Yeah, you want to handle that one?
Yeah.
Actually, some of the projects that we're looking at, Governor and Commissioner, a few back in January, talked about some 10-year plans, some projects we're looking at. Top end of 285 is from I-20, I-20, we're looking at managed lanes across there, too, also improvements of I-20 on each side of the city there, too, east and west side. So there's several projects we're looking at, trying to move traffic around, so we should have some good things coming up here soon.
State Road.
Yeah, State Route 20, they're winding up there above, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
John, thanks for being here, I appreciate it, and Bert, thanks as well. I have a Peach Pass, had it for years, I can't, it's the easiest thing to use, the customer service is great, and the website is easy to navigate, so.
Thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Tab two would take us to Support Service Agency, we have one item, John?
Afternoon Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We're going to talk to you a little bit about the rebuild of Fire Station Number 18, which is on Mars Hill Road. Today, we have the architect with the Howell Group, Bill Howell, and Alan Kronenberger will be here, and Willie Tanks with Fire, in case you have any questions. After we show you how this fits into the neighborhood and show you some of the workings of the inside, we're going to ask you if you're comfortable with that, we'll ask you tonight to approve that so that we can continue with the final design. Mr. Bill Howell?
Thank you, John. I apologize, I'm recovering from a cold and my voice is a little scratchy, so if I'm not speaking loudly enough, please wave at me. Well, Fire Station Number 18 is one of the stations that we're excited about getting into for Cobb County. We've done several stations for you over the last few years, and this one has got some good features, we feel, that we've indicated before, but it's primarily designed, and I, okay, it's primarily designed to, as other stations have been, to pay respect to its surrounding neighbors, both these buildings always, to blend in, to not jump out at someone. We want to complement, because a lot of our stations for you have been in residential areas, adjacent to residential areas. So this station is again one that we are attempting... So this station is again one that we are attempting to make every effort to make it belong, to make it, again, blend with the neighborhood. And we do that in starting the design of one of these stations by going into the surrounding neighborhoods and doing our own study, basically, of architectural features that we begin to see. And we try to use as many of those features in the design. So again, it makes the neighborhood comfortable that this station is not trying to be different. It's trying to be a good neighbor. Their features, as this one shows, pitched roofs, finishes on the roof, exterior finishes like brick. We often try to also mix in lately, as you know, many of the residential areas are using a lot of brick and stone. So that's something on this station that we're also going to study very diligently. The station itself is located on approximately a two-point-six acre piece of property next door to the old Station Eighteen. Excuse me. This particular location, in addition to the station itself, which is a three-bay station and will accommodate a battalion chief's headquarters, the station site itself will also have a fueling station and will have a salt barn. The station is adjacent to residential on the right-hand side as you face the site. Of course, it's got retail and commercial on its left side, is a shopping center just past the existing station. It's residential behind, it's a church across the street. So as I said, we are comfortable that the station itself should function as Cobb County expects it to. It's an economical approach, but yet it's one intended to last with low maintenance throughout its use by Cobb County. The site, as I mentioned, is getting everything on the site. It's a good site in the sense that it's high and it's sloping in all four directions. The driveways are minimizing on the amount of paving up in the front of the building. We've got all the crew parking on the side and in the back with only some public parking out front. The salt barn is the lower right corner, as you can see. So again, the trucks can get in, load, get out without, again, hindering the movement should there be a fire at the same time and the call of the trucks. Our detention's in the very back of the building and will feed into an existing drainage basin, so to speak, that's running down beside the existing Station Eighteen. Floor plan, hopefully, which is next, is a system that we have, again, utilized for you before, where we separate the bunk room area from the dayroom area. In this scheme, the bunk room is that area on the top of the building floor plan. And that does several things. One, because when a fireman is on duty, if they have a call during the middle of the night and he catches a few minutes when he can take a nap during the next day, he doesn't want to be interrupted by the noise of the kitchen or any of the other noise by our crew members who may not like himself, need a nap at that particular time. The day area on the lower part of the floor plan has got an outdoor enclosed patio area where they can go out and eat in good weather. It's got a good-sized exercise room and it's set the battalion chief quarters on the very back right corner of this floor plan. That, I think, is probably the extent of our slides. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that I might could for you.
Any questions? Where we're heading with this? As you indicated, this is similar to fourteen over in East Cobb, right?
Right.
Yep. Go ahead.
Is this freestanding fire station?
Yes.
Is it, where is Fire Station Eighteen now?
Right next to it.
So it'll be built, a new fire station on the same property?
Yeah, show it back.
Yeah, the existing Station Eighteen is the very top of this drawing.
Okay.
Right there. Then the fire, I mean, the.
So it's across the street?
The retail shopping center is just above the old Station Eighteen.
Not a street.
Church is just across the street.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tab three. Director Johnson, two items?
Good afternoon, Chairman. My name is Dana Johnson with Cobb County Community Development. And I would like to introduce two individuals to you, Mr. Jason Gaines, who's the Planning Division Manager with Cobb County, and a Mr. Greg Allen with National Sign Plazas, who will be doing this presentation for you. Just as a brief introduction, this is a program that the county is considering as a pilot program to help deal with some issues with sign cluttering in our roadways. And we looked at some of our neighbors who were doing this successfully and thought we could learn something from some of our neighbors and how they're being successful. So with that, I'll introduce Mr. Gaines to start the presentation for you.
Thank you, Dana. Good morning or good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Jason Gaines, Cobb Community Development. This is a proposed pilot program for what is called home builder kiosks. And some of our neighboring jurisdictions, such as Douglas County, Cherokee County, City of Woodstock, Fulton County, you may see these clusters of signs on plazas at individual intersections that show advertisements for home builders. And what we're proposing, first of all, we've been approached by a company based in Colorado called National Sign Plazas that provides this services to cities and counties across the country. And this afternoon, I have Mr. Greg Allen from National Sign Plazas to tell you a little bit more about the pilot program that we're proposing here in Cobb County. And with that, I'll have Mr. Allen come forward.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Georgia Realty Track estimates that approximately thirty-five thousand weekend directional signs are placed in Metro Atlanta right-of-way's weekly. You know, if you get at least a thousand of those signs in your community, that they can be an eyesore. They can also be a distraction to traffic. And they also present a problem for code enforcement. Code enforcement has to remediate these signs at the end of every weekend. These signs are usually deployed between Friday and Sunday each week, which are the peak traffic hours for most drivers, but also happens to be the biggest shopping days for home buyers. These signs, as I mentioned, are remediated by code enforcement weekly at a direct cost to the county in man-hours. We do, in fact, have a solution for the weekend directional signs. That kiosk that you see, the home builder kiosk system, was created by NSP's founder, William Plaid, in nineteen ninety-seven. These signs were created to provide communities with an alternative to managing their off-site illegal signage being used by builders and developers. With six regional offices in the United States, NSP currently manages over two hundred home builder signed kiosk programs. Eleven of those programs are being managed here in Metro Atlanta for other counties and incorporated cities. I've listed some of those counties in our slides. We currently provide home builder kiosk programs for Fulton County, Cherokee County, Dawson, Walton, Fayette County, as well as a number of incorporated cities in the metropolitan Atlanta area. Because National Sign Plaza's model is designed to follow real estate growth and development as well as make capital investments in communities that we serve, Cobb should be very happy that we've approached the city for the home builder kiosk program. It is a definite indication that Cobb County's residential housing is growing, and that's always a good sign. Let me give you some of the benefits of this program. The NSP's home builder kiosk program is provided to the county at absolutely no cost to taxpayers. The program is funded entirely by NSP and it covers the design, fabrication, installation, maintenance, and management of the program. Builders are asked to lease panels on our kiosk structures at an average cost of about sixty-five dollars a month. In addition to that sixty-five dollar fee, we assess the builders and developers a ten-dollar administrative fee. That ten-dollar administrative fee is collected and paid back to the county as a benefit to the county. Many of our cities and counties are utilizing that additional revenue specifically to target new community development projects, enhancements to their parks and green space. But of course, the monies or revenues generated from the program can be used at the county's discretion. Equally important, the kiosk system also, as I mentioned, remediates or alleviates the problem of having code enforcement go out on a weekly basis to remove all of these signs. NSP has a ninety-eight percent approval rate from builders and developers that utilize our kiosk programs. And they prefer this program because it actually provides them with advertising, marketing for their developments twenty-four-seven as opposed to just on weekends. The program is much more cost-effective than putting out weekend directionals as well. NSP will work with, in concert with the community and economic development departments, as well as administrative staff in Cobb, to design, custom-design a kiosk program that's consistent with the county's existing brand. So we're not looking to develop a kiosk program that'll be unsightly. It will be one that's consistent aesthetically with the Cobb County current branding program and environmentally friendly as well. Our directional kiosk systems also meet or exceed all Georgia Department of Transportation as well as Cobb County transportation requirements. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. Jason, maybe directed more towards our planning staff.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, is this an option for those in the market or is it going to be required for the?
On a pilot basis, it would be an option. There was some additional information I wanted to cover to kind of close things out. And one of those items that you see on the slide in front of you now is elimination of visual clutter caused by weekend directional signs. So the idea would be to have the builders, you know, subscribe to this program and in lieu of having the weekend directional signage, they could have, you know, advertising on a kiosk. As Mr. Allen stated, it would be twenty-four-seven as opposed to just on the weekend. So the idea is to use the pilot to see if it's effective in reducing the weds. Also, this is something that stands to help us achieve content neutrality. You know, the Supreme Court has recently rendered rulings regarding sign regulations in local jurisdictions that requires local jurisdictions to only regulate signs based on aesthetics. Can't be, it can't be anything related to what the sign actually says, hence the term content neutral. So this is actually a step in the direction of our ordinances and regulations of signage being neutral in terms of the actual content of the signs.
Okay, thank you. And then another question, but it's for the presenter. How do you communicate this to those in the real estate community that this option is there?
Our programs are marketed to all of the builders and developers in the areas that we cover. We reach out to all of them and market directly to those builders. We manage the entire process with the builders, sell them the panels, design the panels for them as well. Most of our builders, or most of the builders that we will encounter in Cobb County also have developments in other parts of the city. They have expressly asked why we don't have the kiosk program in Cobb County. And we've, of course, explained to them that we're trying to work with the county to bring the program online.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, if I might add, Commissioner, the community development staff will take the onus of informing all the builders that this program is available if the decision's made to move forward with it.
Okay.
Commissioner Vrill?
Is it our intention to make this optional and not mandatory as far as code amendment changes? Is that what you're saying? You're smiling. I must ask a pretty good question.
This would start off as a pilot program so we could see how the community reacts to this change. And if we have a positive reaction from the community, we would look at doing this countywide. And then if that were to happen, we would, there would be two steps that would need to occur for the county-wide implementation of this. One is we would need to remove the weekend directional signs from our codes. And we would need to go into a full contract with a vendor in order to provide this service.
Is there any cost to us for this?
No, sir. This would be totally cost-neutral to the county. Actually, we'd probably end up gaining a small bit of revenue due to the ten-dollar fee that will be placed on each sign that's put up.
What I heard, Mr. Hankerson, is we could reduce community development's budget by ten dollars per sign.
Actually, I was going to let him take me. I was going to go lunch with that.
Oh, it's ten dollars for signing, so that could add up a little bit. That's what I heard, too. Commissioner Vrill?
I like the idea. I'm just concerned that if we still have the weekend directional signs allowed, I mean, who's going to pay to have their name on a sign? And will it work to see? I mean, unless they're, unless it's, you know, the weekend signs are banned, they're, and that program is free for them and they can do it now, why would they buy into this? And we don't want this to be a failure if we're looking at permanently adopting it.
For a builder, every weekend, they have to hire somebody to go out and put out signs every single weekend to inform people of where their different subdivisions are being developed. So this would actually end up being a cost savings to our builders and our development community because they wouldn't be paying the man-hours to put out those particular signs as well as the fabrication cost that would go along with the signs. So I think this would really end up being a win-win for everybody in that regard, having a more aesthetically pleasing mechanism for communicating new subdivisions. It would be a savings to the county in being able to redirect staff to other community development issues in the code enforcement realm as well as some revenue that will be coming in to help other aspects of our budget.
Okay, and my other question, and this may be for NSP, but the maps that you gave us show the yellow star is where they will be located in each of the four districts, which I only see one yellow star.
I can address that, Commissioner. As part of the pilot, the concept was to have one test location, one pilot location in each of the commissioned districts. And the map before you right now is kind of a high-level overview of those four locations. In District One, the proposed location is the Du-West intersection, Du-West Road at Acworth, Du-West, in Kennesaw, Du-West Road. District Two, proposed location is at Johnson Ferry at Woodlawn Drive. District Three, Holly Springs at Post Oak Tritt. And District Four, East-West Connector at Hicks Road. Now, here's a caveat to that, not necessarily at that intersection, but somewhere thereabout. That's where NSP comes in, where they'll send their teams out to actually scout the areas to kind of see where the weds cluster. Code enforcement has a little bit of insight on that as well. And they'll work with us in the code enforcement division and community development to kind of help identify the best locations in or about those four stars shown on that map to run the pilot and see how it works out.
Okay, so this is just for the pilot program and it can expand if we adopt it permanently to more than one sign?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, and my only other suggestion would be to place these in the four districts with the new district lines. District Three, where you have it now, will not be District Three.
Well, let's do this. It's a great presentation. It's a concept that is not new to the region or to Cobb County. Let's have staff walk the halls and meet with each of the commissioners and get their input and their concerns and thoughts. input and their concerns and thoughts. And then if there's a consensus that we want to try this pilot and come back with a recommendation for our consideration at a later time. It's important to understand that this addresses new subdivisions and new home subdivision and individual real estate sales won't be impacted by this in terms of individual real estate agents that want to put directionals out for any type of single home sales or resales that they might have. This excludes that, so it's not, it's not to accept the fact that we're going to totally eliminate weeds, it's gonna minimize what we have, but understand that we have individual resale residents that are represented by individual real estate agency, they're still gonna want to have some type of legal directional signage that follows our code. So we just, let's talk about it, let's get together with the commissioners, let's get together with some of the, our partners and get an opinion and a recommendation from staff. Okay?
Yes sir.
Thank you. Anything else? Appreciate it. So let's go to number two, Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, Dana Johnson with Cobb County Community Development. And I would like to introduce Ms. Sabrina Young, who is the Economic Development Coordinator for Cobb County. And she is here to provide an update on the South Cobb marketing and branding strategy. Back in twenty-fourteen, the Board of Commissioners approved a contract with Slant Media LLC to really look at ways that we can rebrand some areas of South Cobb and try to, and try to remove misperceptions about South Cobb, because South Cobb is a great place to live and a great place to work, and we want to do everything we can to help address that. So with that, I'd like Ms. Young to provide a status update on where we are with this project.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Chairman and Commissioners. Again, I'm Sabrina Young with Cobb County Community Development, and I'll give you an update on the South Cobb marketing and branding strategy. South Cobb has been an area of challenge in Cobb County for several years, as well as an area of great potential. In an effort to address some of the needs there, the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority has partnered with some local business organizations as well as community leaders and local residents to drive a marketing and branding strategy for the South Cobb community. The purpose for this includes several reasons. One of them is just to create a new brand for South Cobb as a whole, to give it a new identity and a sense of place, to allow the residents of that community to have a sense of pride in their neighborhood. We also wanted to address some of the misperceptions that are held in that part of the county, whether it be ideas about the people who live there, the schools in the area, or some of the amenities and attractions available in that part of the county. We also wanted to foster some economic development in that part of the county through the attraction of new business investments as well as residential development, and to promote some of the events and attributes that may be held at maybe the Mabel House Bar and Amphitheater, Six Flags New Announcements, or even the Silver Comet Trail. This process began through an RFP process that was led by the Cobb County Purchasing Department. A selection committee was created to include Cobb County staff as well as some community experts from Cobb Travel Tourism and Community Development Staff as well as Cobb Communications Department. Though, the selection committee received seven proposals in response to the RFP. From those seven proposals, the selection committee unanimously selected Slant Media. They're based out of Charleston, South Carolina. The budget allowed for this program, for this project, is one hundred thirty thousand dollars, and those funds are derived from a Department of Community Affairs grant, the Mabelton Grant Fund. The advisory, there was also, I'm sorry, advisory committee created to provide input and their expertise throughout the duration of the project. There are about fifteen active members on this advisory committee. They consist of members from the Cobb Chamber of Commerce, Cobb County Community Development Staff, Six Flags Over Georgia, Wingate Hotel, which is located right in South Cobb, as well as some local residents, and more, as you can see listed there. There's also some local connections to this project. Although the firm who was selected is based out of Charleston, South Carolina, they partnered with the South Cobb firm AP Advertising led by Angela Presley for a portion of this project, which will be discussed in just a minute or so, as well as an Atlanta area firm and whose owner just happens to be a Mabelton resident, Look Listen. So in partnering with AP Advertising, they led the community outreach portion and survey of this project. The survey was, began, I'm sorry, February through April of two thousand and fifteen with the goal of determining how people feel about South Cobb, what is their overall perception of South Cobb. The survey was open to residents of Cobb County, specifically South Cobb, as well as people who live outside of the county as a whole. And we had five hundred seven people participate and respond to this survey. We had the surveys online, we had community meetings where we had computers on site provided by the county, where people could answer those surveys online. We also had printed surveys that people could fill out by hand and return those to AP Advertising to include their responses as well. As you can see, based on the statistics listed above, we had about eighty-six respondents from South Cobb. A lot of those were married couples, and so we just had a lot of diversity in the responses we received. Some of the survey questions are listed here in red. As you can see, one of the things that stood out the most was the most important thing to highlight about South Cobb. And as you can see there, one of those responses is that it's family oriented and there's a community feel in that area, in that part of the county. That theme resonated throughout the entire project, throughout the entire survey portion of the county, despite the respondent's age, race, income level, or anything. So the family feel and the community that they felt there was just constant throughout the process. As you can see, looking toward the last three questions, we got the same responses from both residents and non-residents. And I'll point out that all the responses throughout the survey were divided between the residents of South Cobb as well as those who are outside of Cobb County, well, outside of South Cobb, to include outside the county as a whole. One of the things that people liked least was the schools, the thing they liked best was that, again, it was friendly and welcoming, and we see that pop up again throughout there. And the worst thing was the lack of shopping, restaurants, and retail in South Cobb. So we wanted to address some of those things. Again, based on the responses and the welcoming community thing, they were asked to, Slant was asked to create a branding statement for this part, for this project. And so they came up with welcoming communities, endless opportunities. And that is for the community felt, the community feel that people described throughout the survey. And endless opportunities speaks to the opportunities that are available and the potential that exists in South Cobb. Another deliverable that Slant gave us was a logo. And as you can see, it's multiple colors represented there as well as several shapes. And this is a very unique shape in that it's similar to, it's inspired by the shape of South Cobb, the lower portion of South Cobb, south of I-20, so it's inspired by that shape. And the different colors and the different shapes within the logo speak to the diversity of that community, again, whether it be age, income levels, or race, as well as the arts and entertainment culture there. And that speaks to the different colors, so they want that to be present in the logo. So these are different ways that the logo can be displayed throughout the county, whether it be on coffee mugs, t-shirts, on the bus system that exists in South Cobb, and different things like that. A second deliverable from Slant Media included signage. We asked them to give us some signage, and this is in response to creating that brand identity in South Cobb. We want you to know when you're in that part of the county. So when you drive in South Cobb, you know you're there because you have the signage that indicates that. It's colorful, it's welcoming, it's open to people. And this is a concept that was created for monument signage that can be used perhaps at exit ramps as you're getting on or off the highway. And here's a view of one of those monument signage as if you're getting off a highway Wayfinding signage was also presented, and this is, again, just a concept of, you know, restroom signs, parking signage, or, you know, it could direct you to different parks or amenities in the community. And this is how that will look in real life if you just took a real life picture of some parking signage or directional signage along the side of the road. So the website portion of this project is led by Look Listen. Again, they're an Atlanta-based firm whose owner just happens to live in Mabelton. We're currently in this process right now, we're in the web design portion of this project right now. The project is about fifty percent complete. This is actually a concept of how the webpage could look. This is actually the homepage, and if you see at the top, you'll have scrolling pictures, that's a picture of the epicenter at the top, the Riverside Epicenter located in South Cobb, in South Cobb. But you'd have scrolling pictures across the top with whatever the featured and top stories are, whether it be the epicenter events there, or announcement from Six Flags, or an event at the Mabel House. And if you click one of the tabs across the top, for example, the visiting tab, you want to go to one of the restaurants. Here's a page, an example of that page and how that will come, how that will look on the website. And so we would feature some of the restaurants, some of the top stories that are featured in local newspapers could be there. So again, we're about fifty percent complete with this project, as well as about halfway through the budget. I've listed the exact dollar amount that we've spent so far. They're working on this online presence, and actually, I understand the Cobb County IS Department is working on the Cobb County website as well. So the next step involves some of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority staff and the advisory committee, meeting with the county IS staff to see if and how we could partner with them in the creation of this web design for the marketing and branding strategy for South Cobb. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you Sabrina. Any questions or comments for Sabrina? Commissioner Kupfer.
Thank you Chairman. I'd like to thank you Sabrina for all of your work towards assisting us in the Redevelopment Authority, which includes pushing and facilitating this effort through the branding strategy.
Yes ma'am.
I think you did a good job of assessing the challenges, but also some of the strengths of the area. And I'll just share with the board that part of the challenge, when I see all of this unique attention to South Cobb, is that South Cobb is trying to get to a position where it's perceived and received as the rest of Cobb County is. And so, you know, what I grapple with as a commissioner is how much do you push this unique identity that's been presented here, but also try to become part of the broader Cobb County identity? And I don't have the answer today, and I think that's something that we're still discussing behind the scenes, but I can share that I really did like the energy of the residents that came out at the meetings to say how they wanted South Cobb to be perceived. I appreciate the participation of residents outside of South Cobb to provide input, and I think that there's a shared interest throughout all of Cobb to see this area move forward. And I appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate the board's continuing help with getting us to where we should be, to be received and, I guess, perceived as broadly as Cobb is.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you ma'am. Mr. County Manager, I believe we're completed for this afternoon?
Yes sir, Mr. Chair.
Let's see everybody at seven o'clock tonight. Thank you.